Cabinet meeting of the twenty fourth of September. First of all, I'd like to welcome officers and members of the public that are in attendance today. There are no fire drills expected, so in the event of a fire alarm sounding, please exit the Ashcombe suite, walk down the corridor, turn right, down the stairs and out of the front entrance of County Hall, and then please disperse until you're given the all-clear to return. In line with our general guidance around social media, very happy that anybody attending uses social media, provided that it doesn't interfere or disturb the business of the meeting. Can I please ask that cabinet members make sure that they speak into the microphone, and indeed any other speakers as and when we get to their item? Could I also say that you make sure your mobile phones are switched to silence? Thank you. So we'll just start with some formalities. So first of all, apologies for absence. Apologies being received from Dr Grant Duff. No others. Can I welcome Mark Newsey to his first cabinet member, cabinet meeting as the deputy cabinet member? Item two is minutes of the previous meeting of the sixteenth of July two thousand and sixteen. Are those agreed? Thank you. Are there any declarations of interest from any members? No, thank you. So the next items are members' questions, public questions and petitions. I'm then going to change the order of the rest of the paper, and we'll take item nine after we've had the petitions. So there are four questions from members. The first is from Jonathan Essex. I can't see Jonathan anywhere. No, okay, so he's had a written answer, which I assume is satisfactory. The second question is also from Jonathan Essex. And the third one. And then the fourth is from Becky Rush, councillor Rush, who I can't see her either. So those questions are in written form, the answers are in written form. I should just point out before we move any further that the deputy cabinet members, which is Alison Griffiths, Mark Newsey and Natalie Bramall, don't have any voting rights in the cabinet meeting. So in the event of a vote, if they don't put up their hands, it's simply because they're not eligible to vote, pardon for any other reason. There were then... Yes, thank you, yes. Yes, in fact, if anybody wishes to see the responses to the questions, then they are on the table there for hard copy versions of those, and they'll also be on the website. There were then three public questions from Sally Blake, John Oliver and Paul Couchman. So we'll take them in that order. So Sally, if you'd like to come forward, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. First, my own question, supplementary. The UK's Committee on Climate Change has given us a target that requires thirty thousand hectares of tree planting a year. That's about forty-eight million trees a year, UK-wide. Based on the area of Surrey compared to the area of the UK, our target in Surrey would be three hundred and thirty thousand trees a year, not the one hundred thousand trees a year that the cabinet member for the Environment has proposed. Why is Surrey's target less than a third of its proportionate share of the UK's target when climate change is the worst crisis we are facing today?
Thank you, councillor Gubbin.
You say that our target's a third of the government's target. I'm just a bit confused what you meant by that.
The UK's Committee on Climate Change, the target for the UK is thirty thousand hectares of trees. According to the Glover Report, page forty-six, issued on Saturday, published on Saturday, that's about forty-eight million trees a year. I've proportioned the area of Surrey to the area of the UK in coming up with the three hundred and thirty thousand.
Thank you very much for the question, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk again about the work that this council is doing to promote tree planting. I'm sure you've read the article this week in the Woken Advertiser, which talks about what this council is doing to plant trees. In fact, I was with DEFRA yesterday talking to them about our very exciting programme of planting trees over the next twelve years. We can all set targets, as Glover has done, but Glover has only just come out this last week, and the hundred-and-eighty-odd-page report will take some reading and then decide in what action. I believe that what we have set as a council is proportionate to our landmass, and one point two million will be challenging. But what I would say is I have been very impressed and excited by the number of people that have wanted to get involved in planting trees, from businesses to local authorities to landowners. And what we will be doing later this year, as I've said in my answer back to you, we will be announcing and producing a strategy to deliver those one point two million trees. I think I'm right to say we are the only council, the only council in the UK that have announced such a different approach of planting one tree for every single head of population in the UK. And I welcome that, and I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you. Sally, are you going to do John Oliver's question as well?
Yes, indeed. First, the target was set by the UK's Committee on Climate Change. It was mentioned in the Julian Glover Report, but it was set by the CCC. A supplementary question from John Oliver. In response to climate change, the government has published a twenty-five-year environment plan. The council is producing a twenty-five-year countryside strategy, and it has declared a climate emergency. However, the proposed Surrey Hills management plan, for only five years, barely mentions climate change and has been described as a light touch. This should be the most important plan the Surrey Hills Board has ever produced. Given the council's role as lead authority for the Surrey Hills AOMB, do you agree that the new chairperson, when appointed, should address the following deficiencies in the plan before it is launched? As it totally fails to properly address the impending climate change problems, should, like other plans, cover a twenty-five-year period? And should set out a radical programme for assessing the effects that climate change will have on the Surrey Hills over that period and seek solutions now rather than as problems arise?
Thank you very much for the question and given the opportunity to explain what the OMB management plan is. It was agreed last year, and then the board agreed that it will be a light touch. It's a five-year. That is the programme that we abide by for all AOMBs, and it's right that we do. However, with climate change, in July of this year, this council adopted a climate change motion, calling for a climate emergency. And there is no doubt that things have changed on the focus of climate, and that will continue. What I would say is the new chairman, when that person is given that role, he will look at the plan, and there will need to be some amendments to it to reflect some of the exciting things that we can do in the countryside, particularly with carbon and particularly with trees. So I would say to you is that the five-year plan is what is normal. I think it's true to say that Glover is making some really interesting, challenging comments. And what we will need to do is reflect Glover in future management plan. But the management plan that we have adopted will be produced, and it will become what we use for the foreseeable future. But I think what's absolutely right is that the board re-looks at the Glover Report and the effect on climate change, and then may next year make some amendments to that report. It is really important to this council and the OMB that we really start to work to address our climate issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I see the councillor Essex here. Jonathan, you've missed your slot, but are there any supplementary questions you want to ask? So we'll take those before the next public question.
My apologies, I struggle catching a council train. In light of that, I'm going to skip question one, because it's quite long. In terms of question two...
Do you want a bit of time to consider? Shall we take the next public question and then you can go back after that?
Happy to do that, if that's okay.
Yeah, thank you. So the next question is from Paul Couchman.
Good afternoon. In your response, you emphasised the large number of responses to the recent consultation. And as the cabinet will probably be aware, I am the lead petitioner, who will be addressing the full council on the eighth of October regarding the changes to night-time fire cover. I'll be doing that as a representative of Save Our Services in Surrey, but also as a Surrey resident. This will be the first time in over ten years that a petition to Surrey County Council has reached over ten thousand signatures, thirteen thousand to be precise, and reached the threshold for debate. Does the cabinet not feel the need to respect those thirteen thousand residents? And the vast majority of those who responded to their own consultation? Not to mention their own firefighters, who have attended today en masse outside? And then to withdraw their recommendation to reduce fire safety cover at night at seven of Surrey's fire stations?
Thank you. Denise Turner-Stewart.
Thank you, and thank you for your question. I think it's important to state that the over eighteen hundred responders that we had to our consultation had the opportunity to examine all of the evidence and all of the data with regard to these proposals in order to inform their responses. However, the petition focused on a very narrow element of the plan, so it's out of context with any of the mitigations that have been set out. So I think that's really the consideration that people would have had would have been limited on its information.
Okay, thank you very much. Jonathan Essex, your last chance.
Thank you. Breath. Okay, with regard to question two, I did ask about, if it's possible, to quantify the estimated risk of arriving later at night. The reply doesn't give any figures, in addition to referring to the main report. The main report simply states it will take longer, on the one hand, my understanding is. But on the other hand, the responses still remain within the ten-minute Surrey response standard. So is it therefore, what you're saying, is the risk is okay, because although it is longer, it is still within the Surrey safe standard? Am I reading it correctly?
We will continue to meet and maintain our Surrey response standard, and the mitigations are set out in the report.
Sorry, if it's possible to have a written reply, because I'm not sure that actually replied to the question. My concern was, has risk increased? It feels like it has. If it has, are you saying that it's still okay to increase the risk? Because it's increasing the risk within the limit that you've set yourself as a ten-minute response time? I'm assuming the answer is the risk has increased, but it's okay because it's within the response time. Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying we will continue to meet and maintain our response standard, and you'll get the information that you seek from my introduction to the report. But you have all the information to scrutinise anyway. Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
And with regard to question three, as you may be aware, it may be Mike that I'm addressing. I've switched slightly in my direction. May be aware that the Government's Committee on Climate Change released its aviation and shipping reports today, and it said that the international aviation and shipping emissions should be within the UK's carbon emissions, and that it should seek a growth target for aviation, no more than half what the government is currently looking at. In light of this, will you review your reply?
Well, unfortunately, I've been a little bit busy today, and I hadn't read it. I've been waiting for it, I knew it should have come last week. Well, first of all, I welcome it. And without reading it, I welcome it, because I think it's the right step forward. Obviously, we need to read it, we need to look at this, and then work with Heathrow. What we've always said, and what Colin and I have met John Holden-K recently, was that if the report that comes out from the Climate Committee says things that you would need to change, will you change your order? And he said, sorry, the DCO order, and he said he would. So there is no doubt that whatever they put in for the planning expansion must deliver what the government sets. And what we have got yet to do is the government, we hope, will agree with the findings of the Climate Commission, like they did the previous one in July. So the answer to your question is, yes, we will need to look at it. What that will mean, I'm not going to answer without studying it and coming back.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we now have three petitions. Mr Kempster, Ms Nicholson and Mr Harding. I think two of you are here. Shall we start with Mr Kempster? You will have three minutes to speak. After two minutes, a light will go on to give you a one-minute warning. Okay?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you regarding the usage of the Wallingham Community Recycling Centre. Although the Wallingham Community Recycling Centre is only a small centre, it is very popular among the local community, as is demonstrated, aided by the five hundred and thirteen signatures you saw on the electronic petition, but also further seven hundred and forty-six that were received in writing. Giving a total of two hundred and fifty-seven residents, which is almost a third of the population. This is further demonstrated through your own figures, where although on your small site, we were seeing twenty vehicles per hour going through that site, which during the few days it was open, it meant there was normally two to three vehicles in at any one time, which meant it was basically full. Since restrictions were put in place, the number of residents using the site has reduced considerably, and it's often seen to be empty. This is partly because of the, most of the products or items that are now able to be recycled there can be collected from the curbside without the need to go to the recycling centre. This means that things like the wood, where people are doing do-it-yourself projects, these items got left behind, and that they no longer have a method of disposing locally. The alternative options being offered of Caterham and Earlswood mean further and longer vehicle journeys, increasing road traffic and pollution. Also, a number of the regular users of recycling centres do actually walk to the centre. You see them walking up the road with their wheelbarrows, with the things they're taking in. These users now need to find alternative methods or transport to get to the alternative centres. The Caterham Recycling Centre, which is the nearest alternative centre, is already a very busy centre. Due to the plant loops in the site, it is regularly closed, resulting in traffic queuing outside. The site is also located next door to Hillcroft Primary School, which this increases, or this is an unsuitable location for a recycling centre due to the increased air pollution created by the adjacent school. And a resulting increase in traffic from other users will only increase that pollution and also increase the risk of accidents to those schoolchildren during term time. Fly tipping is a major issue in the area. Tandridge is one of the highest, has some of the highest levels of fly and tripping in the county. And anecdotally, there does seem to be an increase in the level of fly tipping around Wallingham, in particular with regard, although not all of it is going to be due to the closure or the restrictions of the recycling centre there. Certainly, it is noticeable the increase in timber and furniture and black bags that are being fly tipped. This obviously is increasing the costs to the local council and county council. The latest Tandridge local plan expects to see a large increase in the number of houses in the village, and this will also increase in the demand. We therefore, we want to encourage our residents to recycle more, and reducing the opportunity, I think, is actually, has the reverse effect. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I think we'll take the second petition as well, as they're both on the same subject, if that's okay. So Ms Nicholson, the same rules apply, three minutes. I think Mr Kempster got a little bit longer, forgot to switch the light on, but we'll give you a fair warning anyway.
Hi. Thanks for having me back with the second petition on behalf of the communities in and around Cranley, responding to the threat of closure that nobody, including the task group, agrees with. We still believe it's morally wrong to make recycling and waste disposal so inaccessible for so many people, that it's incredibly short-sighted and unacceptable, especially given the sheer amount of people living in the area, as well as the hundreds of new homes being built. Because of the recent changes, many people have had no choice but to leave outside their homes waste today or their neighbour would previously have disposed of, by taking it to the centre themselves, or they've put the wrong things in the black bins, so things that would have been recycled have been sent to landfill or incineration. Yes, we can pay for collection, but it's forty-four pounds per item, and that's a lot of money, and that in itself is unaffordable to many people, as well as the eighty-five pound a year for a garden waste bin. There've been a lot of garden fires in the area. A lot of people have been complaining about their homes being smoked out by people trying to burn their waste. And regardless of whether it's agreed that it's a link or not to threats and to the waste not being able to be accepted anymore, there has been an increase in fly tipping, which anybody who lives in the area can see almost daily. We're really happy that the task group are recommending the centre remains open, and we agree that education around recycling also needs to happen. But without the complete service being brought back, it seems rather strategic. People are worried they're being forced to go elsewhere, being forced to pay or to leave their broken goods outside, and then in a few years' time, we're going to be told again that the centre's underused and that it will be under threat of closure again. Cranley Centre's a key service to the local community. It's a very big community, and it was very well-used, and it is very relied upon by many people. So we'd like its services restored, but we'd like the threat of closure to be removed as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike Gubbin.
I don't think I really want to comment too much today, but to thank you both for raising the issue today. And as you quite rightly said, Andrew Povey, who's done a very good job putting together the results of the task group, has made a number of recommendations. It would be inappropriate for me to say today whether or not cabinet would or wouldn't be taking those on. But what I have always said is we do not want to close them, and that is still our intention. But we also need to look at how we can make that happen. What I would say to you both is that in October, we will have a cabinet paper which will look at waste in its entirety, because at the moment, there is a big campaign with the government in several consultations in dealing with waste for the future. And we need to take those into consideration when making our report back to cabinet in October. And it will be a very comprehensive report, but I do thank you for coming, and we certainly will be taken on board, and we have listened to you. And we now need to analyse what we can and cannot do. But thank you very much.
I think I'll probably go a little bit further than that. I am very hopeful that Cabinet and council will confirm that neither of those recycling centres will be closed, and the threat of closure will be removed. And that will be confirmed at the cabinet meeting in October. There are some other points that you have raised, and indeed the third petition in relation to charges, which will be dealt with at the next cabinet meeting. But I think you can rest assured that both of your recycling centres will remain open. I think there is, and the evidence in relation to fly tipping is difficult, because, you know, I know that's the general view, that it does increase fly tipping. I'm not sure that's necessarily the case. I think, though, you touched on the point which I'm very keen on, which is the education of the public in terms of what they can recycle. And I think we will do more, and the district and borough councils, I hope, will do more to encourage recycling, although we have a very good rate generally in Surrey. But I think we need some consistency across the county in terms of what can be recycled, and we need to explain that better to residents. Thank you very much for your petitions. And just to check, I don't think Mr Harding is here, is he? So we're all... The next item then is representations received on reports to be considered in private. None were received. The reports from the select committees, local committees, two reports were received. One from Communities, Environment and Highways regarding Making Surrey Safer, which is called as item nine on our agenda, and the other related to the Heathrow consultation. I believe that councillor O'Reilly and councillor Hussein are both going to speak briefly on those items. Councillor O'Reilly.
Thank you, Chairman, very much indeed, and I will be brief on both items. Turning on the Making Surrey Safer item. First of all, I want to pay thanks to Saj Hussein and his task group, who worked meticulously for many months on this issue. Their recommendations were adopted unanimously for all parties and groups at the Select Committee meeting last week. And I'm very happy, I'm sure Saj is, with the response from the portfolio holding the cabinet, accepting all the recommendations that the committee and the task group put forward. I appreciate on item one, in terms of getting numbers, that cannot be absolutely categorical at this stage, that the compliment that is envisaged by in April two thousand and twenty will be achieved. But I think, I'm sure I speak for everybody in this council and around the table and our residents, that it would be most unsatisfactory and deplorable and regrettable if by April two thousand and twenty that target hadn't been achieved. And I'm confident, and Denise is nodding, that it will indeed be achieved. Chairman, the only two points I would want to make in addition to that, and it covers, I think, some of what the protesters, you know, the guys outside the firefighters were saying, and indeed Jonathan Essex's question to earlier on, and that is response times. And it's, item two here is really very, very important. And I'm sure the cabinet itself will do the monitoring of performance on a quarterly basis. And you can be assured that the Select Committee and Saj's task group will be doing exactly the same. And the first sign, if targets are not being met, that will raise an orange and perhaps a red signal as we go forward. Obviously, the hope is that the expectations in the plan will be met, and that response times will not deteriorate, and that therefore, you know, the fears, you know, the understandable fears of firefighters and others, that this will not be a problem. And the final point on this, if I may, Chairman, is section three, and it relates also to clear, how shall we put it, discontent and not being persuaded by our firefighters. Anecdotally, and plural of data is not anecdote, or the other way around, but I happened to be a meeting on, a public meeting on Friday, and a firefighter voiced the same concerns as have been expressed today. And so it's absolutely essential, and I'm sure Steve Owen- And so it's absolutely essential, and I'm sure Steve Owen Hughes and the team and the portfolio holder, will continue to engage with firefighters, the fire service in its entirety as we go ahead. So again, that their fears of what may happen will not be eventuated in the reality. So on that basis of, you know, the committee and the task group, you know, gave the proposals a, you know, a, you know, supported the proposals, and it is now up for the fire service, supported by elected members on behalf of our residents, to make sure that that is delivered. I don't know if Saj has any more comments, subject to your permission, sir, on that issue.
Thank you, thank you, Leader. Basically, I don't want to go over what councillor O'Reilly has said. It is point one, that it's, you know, we want to reassure us on that, that the staff will be up to his full complement on the thirtieth of April, or the beginning of the April, when the work comes into force. But I do say that we did meet lots of people, lots of witnesses came forward, and I'm grateful they did come forward and give their input. What was most important and at the forefront was the safety of Surrey, the residents of Surrey, their safety. And I think it's covered most of it, but I don't want to go over John Sir O'Reilly, but is that number one point at the staffing level which is a concern to us? Thank you.
Thank you. Denise, do you want to say anything at this stage?
Thank you again. We had this discussion on Thursday, and we were very, very grateful for the amount of time and attention that your committee and your task group have given to this. It was very clear from all of the engagement and all of the comments and all the questions from your members, that every member of your committee have engaged fully with this very, very necessary scrutiny process. You've raised three separate areas, all of which were debated in full on Thursday, and we will give our commitment absolutely to monitor the establishment levels. We were having a discussion at PPTC yesterday, so one of your task group members made that request, and that was reinforced, that we'll be monitoring the crewing arrangements, and that the response times obviously will be coming to your committee, and we will be monitoring very closely. You'll hear shortly how some of those are improving quite quickly. So, and with regard to the support to staff that you raised, I gave that undertaking as well, that there is an unprecedented level of staff engagement and support and welfare. Occupational health is an absolute focus and priority for Surrey Fire and Rescue Service. I give you that undertaking, you've heard that from the chief fire officer, but I wanted to repeat that for the record. Again, thank you very, very much for all the work that you've given to this exercise.
Before we move on to Heathrow, I should have added very quickly that the task group that Saj is chairing is going to continue to address some of the other issues that were raised by the inspectorate's report, culture change and other areas that are not necessarily covered by the safer, Keeping Surrey Safer Plan. And so that work that Saj and his team has started on will be continuing, and I'm sure the dialogue will be as positive as it has been up to now. Turning now, sir, to Heathrow. Again, the committee felt that the letter from Colin and the, to Heathrow, and the paper that accompanied it, the very long and detailed paper that accompanied it, was very, very good indeed, and we had no problems at all with it, and we commend it, and I hope it will be pursued vigorously. There's always, I'm not going to say a but, but there's an and, and it's a big and as well. Mike Goodman, Mike at the meeting summed it up in really rather well, when he said the process of engagement has been fine, the asks however, that the county have requested of Heathrow have been anything but fine. And it is quite clear, demonstrably clear, painfully clear, from the submission, that across the whole range of issues, whether it's bus services, whether it's carbon emissions, whatever it is, Heathrow have just not delivered. They have shown very little signs of delivered, and I suspect of all the asks we've made over the months, none have been forthcoming from Heathrow. And that puts aside the rail access, Sun Rail access, which of course is the gift, is in the power of the government. So, you know, that is a somber background for which this council, as a non-decision-maker, but on representing a 1.1 million of our residents, have really now got to come much firmer, much, much firmer with Heathrow, and we expect action from it. The only other point I would raise, Chairman, and it was raised by Jonathan Essex a minute ago, this council in July has declared a climate change emergency. We've got Heathrow expansion, we've potentially got Gatwick expansion too. If that declaration of emergency means anything apart from just words, it means for us as a council, we have to raise the bar higher than we would have done because of our environmental expectations, having declared a climate change emergency. This only adds, reinforces the point that the letter and the paper that was produced comes to the conclusion. In other words, we have been woefully inadequate from Heathrow in providing information, and even more woefully inadequate in showing commitment from Heathrow to our residents. So the question, and I leave it as a question at this point, is at what point does this Cabinet, or you, you ladies and gentlemen, and us as a select committee, and members as a whole, decide whether our current position, which I regard, I view as sort of benignly neutral, at what point, maybe six months from now, do we go back to the full council and to our residents with a different view about Heathrow expansion? I think we're getting to the point, and I think the committee feels we're getting to the point, where that question at least now needs asking. So my final sentence is more power to your elbows collectively in trying to get something from Heathrow, because what has happened so far is simply not good enough. Thank you, Chair.
And I would endorse much of what you said there. At the end of the day, the position of Surrey County Council is to protect the, or to prevent further disruption to the lives of Surrey residents through the airport expansion or in other, in other ways, whether that's on air quality, noise, road or rail. We have put in a very clear submission response to the consultation, which sets out our concerns. As you said, those have not been addressed to date in many of the meetings that have been held with Heathrow Airport. And I think the answer to your rhetorical question, if it were rhetorical, is that we will consider the Heathrow's response to the consultation, we will see what they then say, having considered those responses, and then we will decide as a Cabinet and as a council, what is in the best interests of our residents. I mean, you are right to point out that we are only a consultee, we're not a decision-maker. We have equally similar issues arising now in relation to Gatwick Airport, who are seeking to bring into general use the emergency runway. So we'll have congestion in the north and congestion in the south, you know, in adjoining authorities. So it's absolutely essential that we ensure that we, you know, we improve or prevent any further disruption to resident lives. So we'll, we'll watch this space very, very closely. Thank you both, both, thank you both very much. We'll now take item nine, which is the report in relation to making safer Surrey. But before we go into the substantive debate, I mean, I do want to take this opportunity to put on record our gratitude to our Fire and Rescue Service. There is no doubt that the men and women who respond day in, day out, show enormous, enormous courage and commitment, and I want to thank all of them for keeping the people of Surrey safe. We're very proud of our fire and rescue colleagues who provide this vital service. It's quite clear from having listened to a number of the speakers outside earlier before this meeting, the strength feeling and the passion for the role that they perform, and we thank them indeed for that. The aim of the Surrey Fire and Rescue Service is of course to save lives, it's to protect property and to protect the environment. And I've no doubt that all residents share those same priorities, and I want to ensure that we have a service that does this most effectively. The report that we'll be discussing shortly outlines in detail the proposals that have been worked up by our most senior firefighters over the course of the last year or so. These plans have in part been driven by Her Majesty's Inspectorate and the report that rated certain areas of the service as inadequate, but their findings and recommendations were already known and being worked on by the Chief Fire Officer, Steve Owen Hughes and his team, when they, when they had sight of that report. The intention of this plan is to modernise the service and to make it fit for purpose for the next twenty years, and reflecting all of the challenges and the demographic changes that we see throughout this county. To do that, I think everybody accepts that there needs to be a much greater focus on prevention, as that's the most effective way to stop emergencies from happening in the first place. The report and the proposals contained within it is based upon a huge amount of data that's been collected over a number of years, and indeed built on the knowledge and experience of the officers in the service, and incorporates the latest technology to ensure that the huge increase in prevention and protection work proposed doesn't adversely affect how efficiently the service operates. We're not cutting funding. Indeed, the savings that were originally proposed in eighteen, nineteen and nineteen twenty have been withdrawn, and I would make that point clearly, there is no intention, there is no plan to cut the funding. And indeed, we're not reducing the number of firefighters either in the county. In fact, we're proposing to invest an extra million pounds in capital, as well as step up the recruitment of extra firefighters, which is already well underway, and indeed, as Denise Turner-Stewart has said, and as she said to the chairman of the Select Committee, we hope to have those, or that recruitment completed by April twenty twenty. I entirely understand the concerns some residents have raised during the consultation. Most of us have been contacted directly by a number of residents, by email, by text and through social media. But I would very much hope that they, like us, would place their confidence in the experts in the fire service, which is Steve Owen Hughes and those that have helped him formulate this plan. And indeed, the plan, although not endorsed such by the inspectorate, has been seen by the inspectorates. And it's, and it's a plan that we believe, based on the information that we have been given, will provide even greater protection to our residents. And most importantly, that the prevention activities will benefit significantly residents and businesses wherever possible to prevent life-threatening incidents in the first place. So what we will do now, Denise Turner-Stewart will take us through the main recommendations of the report, and then we will see where we go from there. But I hope that, the problem with all of these things is that, I would say this, there has been some misinformation, perhaps misinterpretation of parts of this plan, which I think has unnecessarily concerned residents. So I hope that during the course of this conversation, and when residents have seen the plan or read the plan itself, they'll be reassured that this is absolutely about protecting them and their property and environment. So Denise, do you want to take us through this?
Thank you, Leader. As the fire authority for Surrey, we are required by law to produce an integrated risk management plan by the Fire and Rescue Framework for England. Our last IRMP was published in two thousand and sixteen. Since two thousand and sixteen, the risks across Surrey have changed significantly and continue to change. Three thousand four hundred and fifty-two miles of road carry almost double the national average of traffic. Sixty-four thousand homes are at risk from flooding from the Wey, Mole and the Thames. Surrey has an aging population, with over eighty-five thousand residents over sixty-five and living alone. This figure is set to rise by thirty-four percent by twenty thirty. As more vulnerable people are supported to live at home for longer, the risk increases with time. People with mobility issues may find it harder to self-rescue and may suffer from slips or falls. The number of people with drug and alcohol dependency in Surrey is rising. Eighty-five thousand premises in Surrey are covered by fire safety legislation that Surrey Fire and Rescue Service enforces, and this includes care homes occupied by some of Surrey's most vulnerable residents. All of the identified and evolving risks are set out in the Community Risk Profile, which is based on five years of existing and ten years of predictive data. This has been thoroughly and externally verified. The service has taken a highly rigorous approach to the analysis of the data to ensure the accuracy of the modelling for the proposals in our Making Surrey Safer Plan. The National Fire Chiefs Council have provided oversight with an assurance panel, including representatives from the Office of the Police and Crime Commissioner, the Local Government Association and SIPFA to provide financial approval, and also the inclusion of neighbouring chief fire officers which have supported the process throughout. Her Majesty's Inspectorate of Constabulary Fire and Rescue Services were provided with our plan during a recent revisit, as our leader has mentioned, and the results of this will be published shortly. In the autumn of two thousand and eighteen, in supporting Surrey Fire and Rescue Service, Surrey County Council removed six million pounds of savings targets following the appointment of our chief fire officer, Steve Owen Hughes. The service was to remodel, to modernise, to address the immediate and evolving risks in Surrey, and to address the findings of a two thousand and eighteen Her Majesty's Inspectorate of Constabulary Fire and Rescue Services inspection, to deliver urgently needed prevention and protection work, and to meet legislation and recommendations following the Grenfell tragedy. In order to fully support the transformation, approximately one million pounds of additional funding was also provided by Surrey County Council. We held a public consultation for twelve weeks from the fourth of March to the twenty-sixth of May, during which we received over eighteen hundred responses. The feedback were broadly supportive of our proposals, and we take on board the concerns that were raised. Our plan sets out how we will change the structure of the service to deliver essential life-saving outcomes through a significant uplift in prevention and protection work in all of our communities across Surrey. We will maintain and meet our response standard of the first appliance within ten minutes and the second arriving within fifteen minutes eighty percent of the time. We will shift capacity from the night time, when we experience fewer incidents and when travelling around can be much faster, to the daytime so that our staff can carry out valuable life-saving prevention work. We will maintain all of our fire stations, and we will increase crew availability at Hazelmead and Walton to manage wildfire and water rescue incidents. We are proposing changes to the Camberley, Fullbridge, Guildford and Woking fire stations, where there will be one appliance at night instead of two, and Eggham, Banstead and Payne's Hill, where cover will come from a neighbouring station. This is a realignment of our resources to manage the risks in Surrey, which are greater in the daytime, and to enable the delivery of our life-saving prevention work in our schools, colleges, homes and businesses. We will increase our number of on-call firefighters by enlarging the qualifying catchment area and making the role more attractive and more accessible. We will charge for example, for some incidents, for example, false fire alarms and annual rescues, but we will also work with businesses and owners to avoid the need to attend and to charge. Changes are proposed to our response model as it is currently inefficient with a surplus of capacity at night. Our detailed and externally validated modelling shows that we need twenty fire engines in the day and sixteen at night. We are proposing twenty-five in the day and thirty on the weekend days and twenty-three at night, and we have built in resilience to allow for training and protracted incidents. The equalities impact assessment sets out the extent of our public engagement, and the action plan sets out the mitigation for potential negative impacts. Since the first of March, we have invested in and adopted new work practices which have improved daytime response times by fifty to sixty-four seconds and night time responses by fifty-five to eighty-eight seconds. Additional technology currently being rolled out will continue to improve our response times. We have recruited eighty-two new firefighters since September two thousand and eighteen, and we continue to recruit full-time and on-call firefighters. Surrey Fire and Rescue Service has some of the most advanced equipment in the UK, and our firefighters continue to be some of the most highly trained and highly skilled. We are extremely proud of our fire service for the exemplary work that our firefighters undertake on behalf of the residents of Surrey, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Our crews are constantly moving around the county so that they are best placed to respond to emergencies. We are proposing changes to keep people safe by having a fire and rescue service fit for today and for our future. We will always send our most appropriate, quickest response to you, wherever you are in the county. Our commitment to you is that we will continuously, continuously work with, invest in and support Our commitment to you is that we will continuously work with, invest in and support Surrey Fire and Rescue Service to keep you, our residents, safe. So the recommendations are as set out, that Cabinet, as the Fire and Rescue Authority, approves the Making Surrey Safer Plan 2020 to 23 for publication and implementation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. councillor Evans has asked to speak on this item, so Robert, you have the same three minutes, if that's okay with a one-minute warning.
Thank you very much, colleagues, thank you. And can I first of all associate myself with the remarks the leader made about his response to the record of the Surrey Fire and Rescue Service, which I endorse. I want to speak briefly on behalf of the people I represent, the people of Stanwell, Stanwell Moor, North Ashfordshire, Spelthorn area, perhaps the people who've been hit hardest by some of the changes that have happened in the fire service so far. They have seen their local fire station in the area my division closed, along with Sunbury, and a new fire station opened, but has also already, as many of you have seen, been closed on several days. So many of them are concerned that they don't feel safer. Some time, reference has been made to response time. The people I represent are in an area where response time has increased, albeit not very much, but response time has increased. And we all know that whether it's a fire, a road accident or a river rescue, the sooner the Fire and Rescue Service get there, the better. So I can tell you, colleagues, that they don't feel safer. And when they speak to me, when they write letters to me, when they communicate on social media or in the local paper, you will have seen that people are not, as I think councillor Denise Turner-Stewart said, broadly supportive of any changes. They are almost unanimously, if not hostile, less than responsive. And I would like to ask, if I may through your chair, of the 1,800 responses, what percentage actually supported the proposals and what broadly supportive means, because of all the people I know who responded were not supportive of that. So the people that I represent, and many people across the county, are concerned. They have seen their fire station closed. It's not what they were promised when these changes were first proposed. It's not what they pay their taxes for. And in April in Stanwell, there was a death in a house fire. There was a death in Staines recently, only last week, in a fire. And on both occasions, not only were Surrey Fire and Rescue Service, they had to call upon the London Fire Brigade to come to help because the system, there were not enough fire, Surrey Fire and Rescue Services available close by. I'm not suggesting that the deaths were caused by that, but it reflects on Surrey Fire and Rescue Service when they have to get fire cover from elsewhere. Speed is important, and people are feeling at the moment letdown. They feel that the document Making Surrey Safer is not making them safer. They feel that austerity is biting, that in Spelthorn, they're feeling the effects of the cuts. And notwithstanding everything that Denise Turner-Stewart has said in the introduction, that other colleagues have said about Making Surrey Safer, there are many, many concerns of the residents that I represent, from the firefighters, from the general public, and I would urge councillors to look very, very seriously at this when they take it into consideration when you come to a conclusion on this item. Thank you very much.
I'll try and answer your question in that. Question four said, to what extent do you agree or disagree that Surrey Fire and Rescue Service should adopt a risk-based approach and focus resources where they're needed and when they are needed? In answer to that question, 50.3% of respondents strongly agreed or tended to agree, 10% neither agreed or disagreed, and 40% disagreed either strongly or otherwise. I think that, so I think that's probably the most relevant question to your answer to your question.
Can I ask on response time, and what percentage of the, how many occasions, or what percentage is the response time that Denise Turner-Stewart referred to being met?
I'll cut the answer whilst, unless Denise has got it, so.
So have you, do you have a copy of the consultation, because it's within the report?
I have, yes.
You're able to see what the responses are, the percentages of the responses there. With regard to Fullbridge, Fullbridge has had an appliance consistently since the station opened, so you are referring to misinformation that has been circulated and referred to by the leader. And I think it's important not to be promoting a sense of a lack of availability at the station, which is due to have its public open day on the 26th of October. And with regard to cross-border arrangements that you seem to question, they've been established since 1947. We have mutual and reciprocal arrangements with our cross-border services, adjacent services, and that is an existed and established practice which will continue and has been established, as I say, for a number of years. Thank you.
I think with respect, we differ on the opinion on the interpretation of what a fire station being closed is. I think your interpretation of closed is different from mine. If the doors are closed and that fire engine is not going out, I'd interpret that as being closed. I think you have a different interpretation.
Mrs Lewis.
Thank you, Chairman. You mentioned, Chairman, misinformation, and much as I respect Robert as a member and somebody representing his residents, I think to use the word cuts when it's been made clear at the beginning of the meeting that there are no cuts in resources which are being given to the fire service, and in fact there's investment in the fire service, is in fact another bit of misinformation.
If you listen, as I'm sure you did, to councillor Denise Turner-Stewart, she said that the fire cover in Spelthorn was going to be reduced at night time, which is a cut.
If I could just come back briefly, Chairman, I think it's also been made clear that the reduction in the night time cover is more than offset by the increase of activity during the day, which is what was suggested by the inspectors. They said we were spending too much of our resource at night when we didn't need to spend so much money. And one of the duties we have as a cabinet and as county councillors is our fiduciary duty, which is a long word for saying that we are absolutely obliged by law to spend our money, the public money, our money as taxpayers, as effectively as possible. And we've been told very clearly by the inspectorate that we are not spending money effectively. So I think it's, you know, incumbent on all of us to think about that when we make our decision, because if we're told we're not spending money effectively and if we're wasting money, that we need to take advice from professionals about how we can spend money better. And I think to put the word cuts on that is a strange word to choose.
Colin Campbell.
Yeah, I was, I've got a question to raise, but one of the words you did use, Robert, was austerity, and that's not in here. Austerity means cuts, money taken out. It's about shifting of services and actually making the service more efficient is where this is going. But I wanted to raise two points, and I think the Select Committee sort of went somewhere on this, and I just want to get some reassurance really from the portfolio holder. Is number one, people don't like change, and change is always difficult to manage and understand because it does drive some fear in there, especially with some of the messaging that's gone out. So I think the two points really is number one, some assurance, you know, this is to be rolled out from April, but actually the report says 2020 to 2023, understanding that actually some of the changes won't be rolled out until the resilience and the resources are in place to actually, to make sure that works properly. So I think some reassurance about how that will work. And also the assurance process behind the scenes. You know, scrutiny are obviously going to be involved, and the service obviously will be itself, to understand, you know, the work that they're doing around the assurance process going forward, to monitor this, to make sure, you know, it delivers what it says on the tin.
Thank you. So as you've stated, all of the changes will be assured and monitored, and it will be a phased approach that will be taken. So we'll have an initial operating model resulting eventually in a full operating model, which will take some time, and it will obviously take time to develop, and will be monitored, and no additional adjustments will be made until there've been established practices that then can then be improved upon or to migrate to the next phase within that process. And as you've said, there is a requirement to have some assurance underneath that process. So that is going to be underpinned by experts from Brunel University, which we're already in discussions with, and we're going to have experts, as we've appointed previously with our National Fire Chiefs Council Assurance Panel, supporting that process. So we have that external validation, which is key, and which is very specific to the approach that we take with everything we do with Surrey Fire and Rescue Service. We like to know that the experts agree with the proposals we take so that we have that confidence. Thank you.
Chair Amy Mead.
Thank you, Leader. I know that there was some discussion and mention of vulnerable residents, and, you know, I think it's really important that I make everybody who's here today aware that there are numerous examples of really good practice going on between adult social care and Surrey Fire and Rescue Service. And I think that's probably best personified in a memorandum of understanding between the two services. There's also numerous examples of joint-up working between the reoverment team and the Surrey Fire and Rescue Service. And this even includes going out jointly and carrying out a safe and well visit for our residents within the adult social care service, and that can include some of our most vulnerable residents being discharged from hospital and returning home. So there's some really good examples of some excellent best practice, and there's lots of information available for adult social care, frontline staff, as well as specialist staff and specialist providers out there in our wider community across the county. And I just felt it was very important to make everybody aware of that. Thank you.
I just think it's important to reinforce what Denise Turner-Stewart has said about external validation. I'm not an expert on the fire service, and indeed none are, none of the cabinet members are here either. So we are dependent upon the expertise of those individuals who are, and I include in that Steve Owen Hughes and his team. Perception is a difficult thing, as always. I accept entirely what you say in terms of your residents' perception, but we must distinguish perception from reality. And this plan will be closely monitored. It's been scrutinised to the extent that we were able to provide input, and indeed the Select Committee have done that, and those recommendations have been accepted. So I think, you know, we need to be very careful, we need to be responsible in terms of how we present this to the public. We need to communicate more constantly with them in terms of this plan and the implementation of this plan. This isn't all going to happen on the 1st of April next year, this will be a phased rollout. And I'm quite sure that the chief fire officer, you know, will monitor very carefully any areas of concern, and those will come back and be addressed. But we have to, we have to do things differently from the way that we're doing it. There's been very clear from the inspectorate's report, parts of it require improvement, parts of the service, parts of it were inadequate. And the biggest single criticism was our failure to put more resource and effort into prevention. And that is exactly what this does, and doesn't do that at the expense of safety for our residents. Before we vote on the recommendation, I would just draw your attention to the, or the four of the proposals within the plan, and that is to spend more time on prevention and protection activities to reduce the likelihood of emergencies. Secondly, to maintain the number of fire stations in Surrey, albeit to change how some of them are crewed. To further increase the number of on-call firefighters in Surrey. And finally, Denise has mentioned, there'll be some charges for non-emergency animal rescues and so on. But, but, you know, this is not, as Mary Lewis has reinforced, this is not about cuts. It is about investment. It is about changing the way in which the resource is used, and I'm confident that this plan will take us from where we are at the moment to where we need to be. On that basis, there is one recommendation, which is that the Cabinet, as the Fire and Rescue Authority, approves the Making Surrey Safer, our plan 2030 to 2023 for publication and implementation. Is that agreed? Raise your hands, please. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr Evans. Item six on the agenda. Were leader or deputy leader or cabinet member's decisions, they're none for noting. Item seven is relation to school place planning and the strategy for specialist placements. And Julie Als will introduce that. You might want to just wait for a minute.
This item on school place planning is linked to the next item, which addresses the capital aspects of this strategy. We have insufficient places in our mainstream and special schools in Surrey for our children who have special education needs and disabilities, and we're too reliant on non-maintained and independent schools to meet the demand. About 12% of the pupils who have an educational and healthcare plan are in these settings, and that's nearly the double, nearly double the percentage that other local authorities exhibit across England. Whilst the non-maintained and independent schools are generally much more expensive, they're rarely more effective than state-funded schools, and 40% of these placements are in settings outside of our own county of Surrey. Unless we provide more specialist places, both in mainstream and in special schools, our children are sent to settings which are a long way from home, the travel time's too long, and we're not helping our children with special needs to be part of their local communities. So we've drafted this 10-year plan, and it sits in two parts. There's a four-year plan to bring on 883 places, which includes 77 bulge places this academic year, and there's a broader 10-year plan which will develop as we improve practice to reduce the need for specialist provision and to increase places in mainstream. If I can draw your attention to table one on page 13, you'll see the forecast number of pupils with specialist needs by placement type. Place planning so that most schools have the expertise and the willingness to provide places for most pupils with a level of need that's met through an education healthcare plan, and increasing specialist places through the expansions and new schools is showing as the potential reduction in table two on page 14. Table three then shows the places planned and the gap with the projected demand. And finally, table four shows the projections on places and demand with our transformation programme, which reduces the number of EHCPs by 10%. We've got 14 planned projects listed at Annex One. That's working in collaboration with our districts and boroughs, so for example, identifying a piece of land in Woking where we can build a special school. Some of them don't have a capital cost because the schools have the capacity to accommodate these extra places, and the free schools have no capital cost. But it's important to say that any planned projects will be subject to individual consultation and the statutory process. And that includes something that we reference at page 10, which is the significant issue with the condition of our pupil referral units, which are outdated and not fit for purpose. So we're planning around the offer for that is underway, and that will feature as a capital request with the supporting papers in due course. I think the best thing to say is that there will be specific risks to be considered on each project, but the bigger risk is not balancing the budget on the high needs block of the schools grant. And therefore, we ask for approval of the recommendations at page nine, which were to approve this strategic approach over the 10-year period in principle, to approve the 77 bulge places for this year, and to agree that those future projects that I've talked about will be reported to cabinet or cabinet member for approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs Mead.
Thank you, Leader. I really welcome this report. I think all of us here are very aware that many children will experience some kind of difficulty in learning at some time during their school life. Most will receive the help they need from their nursery, school or college, but some children may need extra or more specialised help. And this report clearly sets out a strong case for supporting those vulnerable children with a more effective service that is closer to home and looks to address the increase in demand for the future. As a portfolio holder for adult social care and public health, it is really important to me that young people receive an appropriate education, one that is appropriate to their needs, promotes high standards and the fulfilment of all potential. needs, promotes high standards and the fulfilment of all potential. This will enable them to achieve their best, become confident individuals, fulfilling their lives ambitions and making a successful transition into adulthood, whether into employment, further or higher education or training. And it's on this basis I fully support the recommendations as stated by Julie set out on page 9 of the report. Thank you.
Mary Lewis.
Thank you, Jim. Like Sinead Mooney, I really support this. I'm really pleased to see some tangible evidence that we're delivering on the unanimous agreement by full council, that we should be bringing our children back into county and Surrey for their education wherever possible. We always know that there will be some placed elsewhere, but we are outliers on that. So I'm strongly supportive of it from that point of view, and I'm sure all members will support it on that point of view because they all voted for it. I just wondered, we're talking here about specialist placements, we're talking about specialist units, we're talking about new SEND schools, but am I right in thinking that underlying this report is we're still working on an assumption that for most children, a presumption, I suppose I should say, that for most children with special educational needs and disabilities, the best possible option is that they should be in mainstream schools in their own communities and growing up with other local children? We haven't changed that presumption, have we? This is just about provision for those who can't be helped in mainstream. Thank you.
So to Sinead's point first of all about the transition into adulthood, by bringing these places on, we're not only fulfilling the 2030 vision of making sure everybody achieves their full potential, nobody left behind, but we are putting our children in their own communities because that's the best way of transitioning them into adulthood. And we know that the support for the level of needs that is experienced in early years is not going through to the adult social care world, so it's incumbent upon us to promote that independence. And to Mary's point, the figures in here show the demand for places would far outstrip what we can provide unless we do support that incentivisation, if you will, within the mainstream schools. There is a national recognition of the challenges that ensure children with special needs can be included in mainstream schools to receive the support, and it is, in most cases, as you've already said, the best place for that child to be placed. Then there's a national report by the Department of Education into supporting children with special needs. And there's a new inspection framework for schools, which will also focus on how the needs of all their pupils are met, including special needs specifically. And then we have our own special needs strategy for Surrey Places, which puts a great deal of emphasis and focus on the early identification of children's needs and support for it. And there's two ways that we're tangibly supporting this. The first is an inclusion fund for children in the early years settings, and we're consulting with those settings to double this to a £3 million investment in 2020/21. And we've established a local learning fund which schools can bid into to further enhance their capacity in their school settings through training or development, or they can bid for short packages of support for individual children so that their particular needs can be met early. It's new this term, but we'll be measuring the impact of that fund through the academic year. And at the moment, the value of that fund is a million pounds for this term. So we're absolutely encouraging mainstream schools to help us in reducing that demand for specialist places.
Thank you, Julie. So there are four recommendations at item 7. Can you raise your hand if those have agreed, please? Three recommendations. And I need to go back to item 6, which has been persistently trying to avoid me, because I think I said that there were no items for noting. In fact, there were three, a decision from me in relation to August Public Law, and then a decision in relation to environmental waste and the highways as well. So perhaps note, there were three decisions under item 6. And there are three recommendations under item 7. We'll have another go. Are those who are agreed? Thank you very much. No more, yes, I know, I'm still on Japanese time. Julie, then, do you want to introduce item 8, please?
As I've said, it's linked very much to the strategic place planning in the previous item. So this again details the projects concerned with the capital programme supporting those. Same information as in Annex 1 and the 77 bulge places, some permanent places that have been brought through. And over the course of that four-year period, those are specified in the settings. So the recommendations are on page 21. Four of them to take a view on.
Thank you. Mel? I'll make this easy for myself. The recommendations are on page 21. Are those agreed? Okay, so the next item is the Adult Safeguarding Board. Now, we've got Simon Turfitt here as chairman of that board. Would you like to introduce the report?
Thank you, Chairman. As you may or may not know, under the CARE Act, we are required to publish an annual report, and this is the first part of getting that published that comes to Cabinet. I will just give you some of the highlights of the report and then obviously open the questions you want to put back. I think from the positive side, we've had much stronger assurance this year, which has been good, with better and more focused data, which those of you who've sat through previous meetings will know has been a bugbear for us for quite a while. We've got a stronger committee structure with delivery and scrutiny now being a focus rather than part of a normal structure. And a better focus on each individual agency in that they have to report to us with an in-depth report, giving us evidence that they're meeting their safeguarding requirements, and also any gaps so that we as a board can respond to those gaps. I think it's also true that we have certainly got better relationships now with the other boards. Children's Partnership has really opened up to us, and that's worked really well for us. I think it's a real positive step for both of us. Community Safety as well with their changes and around domestic abuse, that means we're working together rather than working somewhat in duplication sometimes, so we've stopped that. And I think the Health and Wellbeing Board is just starting to work with us now, which is also useful for some of the people that we think about that are vulnerable. There's more engagement from agencies, so work is shared out, which is a constant challenge for us, is how do we get our workload actually achieved? Because everybody will come and say they have a day job as well as doing the job for us. We would argue safeguarding is everybody's issue, so therefore it shouldn't be such a problem. We've built a much better training programme, and what we've decided to do was not try and duplicate what everybody else does, but pick those spots where we could go. You might say that's a fairly common sense thing to do, but it was a requirement earlier that we looked at where we needed to do that. We've now changed that. And a good example of that, we've just put on a session for the district and boroughs, each of the district and boroughs about adult safeguarding essentials, and we've also got one around training people to reply to Section 42, which I'll refer to a bit in a minute. One of the most challenging things for us, but I think somewhere where we think we've got a solution, is we've asked Health Watch to reflect the voice of the user by interviewing people that have been through the process, because it's very difficult for us, certainly for adult social care, to ask people what they think of the process when they've just been through quite a difficult situation, and allowing them to really express their feelings openly. So that is in process at the moment. It is not reporting out till December, but it will give us some sense of where we're really missing some tricks and where we also have good services and we can duplicate those and send those on. On a similar note, some of you, I can't say whether you did or not, came to our conference, but we had a speaker there, a son who had special needs, learning difficulties, who'd been through a traumatic process, not in this county, in another county. And he came and talked to us all about the experience he had of going through there, which wasn't a pleasant one, to say the least. But what it did do is it made us all learn and understand that actually, sitting the other side of the fence sometimes, we tend to get a little process focused, we tend to get a little jargon focused, and we need to think about that and the impact it has. Some of the other things we've done, built a website, shared with the Children's Board. We always struggled to get people to find our website on Surrey County Council, which is a challenge, but now it's open there and it's easy to find. We have something called learning briefings, which basically what we do is we take learnings primarily from safeguarding adult reviews, but also from Section 42s, which are the pre-safeguarding adult reviews, and take those and take those firstly in the board, we have working sessions on them, but we encourage people through these handouts to take them to our own agencies. Because again, one of the things that's always pointed at safeguarding is, you seem to be saying the same things every time we go through a problem, and we're trying to resolve that. It's not always possible, but we should be able to demonstrate that we're learning and changing things. We have a National Safeguarding Week on the 18th to 22nd of November, which I hope you will all notice, take part where you can. We will be advertising on buses, we will be talking on the radio, it will be in the local newspaper. And all the board's agencies have agreed to do something in their own establishments to try and support that. So the point of this is to raise safeguarding. I'm sad to say that if you talk to the people that are not involved in safeguarding, it doesn't have a very high profile, nor do they really understand what safeguarding is until we explain it. They understand what it should be, and therefore, so we're very keen to try and raise that So I guess, what are the challenges that we face and still face, if I'm totally honest? The quality of inquiries coming into us and the quality of the Section 42 reports we get has not been at a level we want it to be. But to be fair to adult social care, they have now recognised this, as have the mental, and they are auditing quite strongly and returning documents where they need to be returned, so that they're not coming into our process and us having to respond, and also making them aware that actually there's a family or a person at the end of this and they need to respond quickly. It will mean that we're seeing some negative reports about the quality of these things, but as a board, we're comfortable with that because we know it's improving, we know where it's going to go, but it is going to take time. And I will say, adult social care have been quite robust about changing this, but it is an inherent problem that's been there for a while and it will take time. Mental Capacity Act is probably a huge challenge for us. Every agency tells me that they've trained all their people to 98.3%. Unfortunately, when it comes to implementation, it doesn't seem to reflect that, and we're going to have a drive on that to try and reinforce that, because actually, the capacity of the person is a moving target. It's not a one-off decision, and you're making decisions around people's lives that really need to be reflected on on a regular basis. So we are really focused on trying to improve that. We're also talking to our colleagues in children's services, because the Mental Capacity Act refers to people of 16 and over, as opposed to the adult series of 18 and over. Private care home engagement, as you all know, there is a huge private care home contingent in Surrey that have no connection at all to Surrey County Council, and we have to find ways of getting them to engage. Some of them are excellent, I must say, very good at engaging and do that. Unfortunately, it's the ones that aren't that we need to worry about, and we are working together with the CQC and other people to try and find ways to raise that profile and get them to respond. It will always be a challenge. I don't think we will ever get to the point where we're comfortable that we're getting where it is. And we are seeing some terrible things come through in Section 42 inquiries and SARS that shouldn't happen if people are responding effectively. I think that's probably it. There's more in the report, obviously, there's a lot to digest there, but I'll open it up to questions. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Lovely, thank you very much. Sinead, did you want to comment?
Thank you. Well, I'd like to thank you, Simon, for bringing this report, presenting the report here to us at Cabinet. I think it's critical that we have sight of this report, because we do have a statutory obligation to safeguarding. And I think what your report has really helpfully done is shown the work and the commitment and the results as well, that the partners who are involved within this are starting to get through this joined-up approach. So I'd like to, as I say, thank you for bringing this to Cabinet today. I'd also like to endorse your comments around raising the profile of safeguarding. I think that's really, really critical, and I think we all have a role here as elective members to support you with that and to raise the profile of the importance of safeguarding and making those reports where we have concerns. So thank you very much.
I'm interested in this report, obviously with my background, my past background and experience in adult social care, but I'm interested in your comments on the graph on page 8 of your report, page 219, I think, or 217, or whatever it is, of our printed papers, where you say that there were 6,900 concerns relating to adult safeguarding received over the year. And it does show a steady increase going forward. And I just wondered your opinion, are these because just reporting is getting better or better referrals coming through? Or is there an underlying increase in problems which we're not really getting to? Because you do say that of the 6,903, a lot of them are just resolved on the way. The question is, what are the serious issues arising out of the 6,903?
Thank you for the question. I think it's a bit of all three, if I'm totally honest. There is better awareness, so people are responding and putting things forward. There's more clarity about what safeguarding is in some agencies, which wasn't there before. I think there is an awareness outside of safeguarding generally, that people are understanding now, and I think there's more demand. I think people are more vulnerable. You've talked about your fire report, but actually, we have exactly the same numbers around the elderly population. If you look at the report, the report tells you the number of inquiries that are coming from the elderly population, and so therefore it will continue to grow. I don't think it's a bad thing, as long as we're responding effectively and also taking on board what it's telling us. I'd also say, in all honesty, some of those inquiries were not safeguarding inquiries. I have mentioned before, but actually, it's been addressed now, was police definition of vulnerable was different to the CARE Act definition of vulnerable, but the police have now clarified that quite clearly, and that means that some of the stuff that's going through to MASH, which shouldn't have been safeguarded, is now not going through there. Does that answer your question?
Yep, thanks very much. Mel?
Thank you, thank you for the report. I'm just amazed to see that you've actually underspent on your budget. Do you have plans next year to improve on that?
Depends what you mean by improve. Do you mean spend more or spend less? I'm looking at you, Mel. The situation is, there are two things. Firstly, we have a very different setup to the Children's Board. We currently have myself on 28 days a year, and we have a board manager and we have an admin person, that's the board, so therefore there isn't a cost. That doesn't mean to say the Children's Board doesn't need its costs and its thing, it's just the way we're set up and what we operate as. I think the second thing to say is that we always have to budget for serious adult reviews, and they are expensive. They tend to come out somewhere between 20 and 30,000, which we are trying to address to try and, but you never know how many you're going to get, and that's the problem. If we don't put them in there, it's very difficult to go back and ask agency partners for more money. So therefore, so what we've done is we've managed to carry over the funds so that people don't actually spend them all. I will endeavour always to be as frugal with the budget as I can be, but obviously there's some situations I can't control.
Denise?
Thank you. Just on the same page, page 8 that Mel referred to with the chart, the possibility that the prevalence of abuse and neglect is increasing and that people are experiencing it or more willing to report it, is there something that could be done around some validation to test that? Because at the moment... Because at the moment, it seems as if this could be the case, or this might be the reason. I think as an assurance, it might be useful, certainly for the report for next year, to have some, whether it's some sampling or something around testing why that trend is increasing, and then understanding the reason for that trajectory. Thank you.
One of the issues will be, how do we actually test that based around the resources we've got and what we do? There is an regular audit process going on through all the inquiries that come in, and that tells us a fair bit, but that's historical, doesn't necessarily tell us future, and one of the discussions we're having at the moment is, how do we forecast to the future to look at this? And I think alongside, especially around domestic abuse, I think alongside the domestic abuse with the Community Safety Board, we could probably come up with something that would allow us to be more robust around that information. I haven't got an answer, but I think it's a fair question, I think it's there. Can I just make one other comment that you've made to a previous thing? I would also say that the fire service has been a really good partner to the Safeguarding Board, and when they go and visit homes, they really do take safeguarding into their purview and what's going on, and help us quite considerably. I don't mean to make a political comment, but I just think they've been really good partners, and they continue to be, so I think it's a really good point.
And thank you for that. It's a very well-written and a very clear report, so can I thank your board, and you in particular, Simon, for all of your hard work, and look forward to seeing you in a year's time, I'm sure. There is a recommendation here to note the report and agree to its publication. Is that agreed? Thank you very much. Right, councillor Few, time for you to do some work.
Thank you. This report before you indicates that we are now well underway to achieve the two hundred million pound savings targets, which were set over the next, over the twenty-four months, with a hundred and six million being achieved last year, and eighty-six million budgeted to be achieved this financial year. The report before you deals with the performance this year and year-to-date to period four. Table two on paragraph and paragraph seven indicates the savings programmes for the year, with year-to-date of fifty-two million of the eighty-six being achieved, all green, with a balance of about twenty-eight indicated as amber or black, and work is currently underway to focus on delivering those items going forward. The detailed performance of each services is outlined in Annex one on page two forty-four, which reflects a shortfall reported that period for nine million, and members will see that it's made up of the eight point two million savings which have been identified as black, three point six increase through SEN, offset by two million extra government grants, and eight hundred thousand in an MRP release of reserves, which brings me down to the nine million. The capital expenditure status is presented in paragraph eleven, table three, which reflects a spend of thirty million pounds against a budget of one hundred and twenty-one. This does raise concerns about the delivery of the overall programme for the year, but I can assure members that work is underway to identify how we can get this thing through the system, and bring up the actual amount of spend through the year to the budgeted amount. And that basically is the good news on this report for the month. So there are some recommendations, if I can find them on this electronic thing. The Cabinet has asked to note the council's forecast revenue and capital budget positions for the year.
Just for clarification for residents, the government announced various one-year spending round. Will any of those announcements impact on this financial year? No? Okay, thank you. Okay, so there is the one recommendation. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item twelve is preparations for exiting the European Union. Councillor Kemp?
Thank you, Chair. The report before you focuses on the work that Surrey County Council has undertaken, and highlight the work that has been done since August, when the government increased the no-deal Brexit planning agenda. Building on the work that had already been done earlier in the year by this council, the aim was to continue to identify and mitigate any possible implications for Surrey, its businesses and its residents. This report highlights the work that Joanna Killian as lead officer, and Steve Owen Hughes as local resilience forum chair have led, identifies the partnership working with central government, neighbouring counties, boroughs and districts, LEPs and the Chamber of Commerce, and there's been some good conversations. In this period, there's also been a greater engagement with the local health partners, with Surrey Hartlins taking a leading role and joining at the table with these partnership conversations, and identifying some of the risks within health, and working together to put some plans in place around health partners around the county. There's been a lot of work internally to reassure our staff and give them support, paperwork they need, in paperwork they need to complete, as well as guidance to staff so they can reassure and support the vulnerable residents of Surrey. I've also been present at presentations with local ports, Dover, Southampton and Portsmouth, and they have done a great amount of work in preparing, upgrading their custom systems, and they again feel ready for whatever may be thrown at them. Although nobody is sure exactly what this may look like, everyone agrees that there will be some disruption. The SCC and all the parties that have been involved in these conversations have done a lot of work in identifying the possible issues and putting in place resilience in all their processes and procedures to make sure we are as prepared as we can be. There was a lot more detail in the paper about the partnership working that's gone on, I don't propose to go through all of that. The recommendations are on the first page of the report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Chairman. This isn't so much as a question, it's just a bit of sort of corroboration for what we're being told in the report, because I listened to it all before when we had a briefing about this, and of course, I believe every utterance that comes from the mouth of Mr. Kemp, but I was very pleased when I went down to the south-east quadrant of children's services on Thursday, and I did a frontline team visit with Chris Townsend from the Residents and Independence Group, and almost the first thing we were told when we got there was about their preparedness under Operation Yellow Hammer guidance, of how our children, especially those placed in Kent and in the Portsmouth area, would be seen shortly before the thirty-first of October, in case there was any disruption to travel and transport, so that we wouldn't be leaving children who are in our care, or children who are on child protection orders, vulnerable because we hadn't made our visits in a timely way, and they gave us some other details as well about the things that they had done in preparation. So it was good to know, I mean, a long way away from the directorate that Colin is responsible for, out there in the frontline teams of children's services, the messages have got through, they have plans in place, and they were able to tell us about them, you know, without us even prompting. So I thought that was pretty good. Thank you.
And I think both Joanna and I have sat in on conference calls with MHCLG, I mean, there's no doubt that the government has stepped up their involvement and plans around Brexit, and I gather they're going to be back sitting tomorrow from their holiday at eleven thirty, so I'm sure this will be on their agenda as well. Can I thank Steve Owen Hughes, who not only has been leading the Making Surrey Safer Plan, but also is Chair of the Local Resilience Forum, and has done a tremendous job in not at all corralling all of the partners, because, you know, it's not that easy. I mean, we've all started really with a blank piece of paper, not quite knowing what we were expected to plan for, but I do think that, as Mary and Colin has said, you know, we are as well-prepared now as we can be in terms of any potential disruption around roads and other areas, and so on. So we will see what happens, what unfolds over the next few weeks, but thank you, Steve, for leading on that piece of work. There is a recommendation to endorse the current preparations. As Colin says, there's more detail in the paper if anybody wants to read it. Are those agreed? Is that agreed? Thank you very much. Item thirteen then is the response to the Heathrow Airport expansion consultation. Mike, I think you're going to...
Thank you, Leader. First of all, let me thank the Select Committee and John's comments early on about the work they put in in reviewing the work of the report that we sent to Heathrow. Heathrow expansion is the most significant infrastructure project in this country in a generation. While the majority of the work is outside of Surrey, the impacts and consequences will be felt by our residents. Officers and myself have been involved in discussing the necessary mitigation measures needed in Surrey for a number of years. We are members of the Heathrow Strategic Planning Group, and Heathrow have also engaged members both at the airport and here at County Hall. We have consistently made clear that mitigation for roads and rail for Surrey residents must be part of the development consent order. We have also made it clear that all the environmental issues must be satisfactorily addressed. And I would like to thank officers for the excellent work they've done in putting this consultation document together. The letter from the Deputy Leader to John Holland-Kay summarised well the key elements of the report, and I'd like to just highlight a few of these points. There is no confirmation that southern access, rail access activities will happen, and this is a real concern for Surrey County Council and the residents. We're still awaiting modelling information on highways to enable us to project the impact on our roads, and we urge Heathrow to supply this information. We also want to see a stronger commitment to local transport for Surrey residents, particularly in the villages. The delivery of green infrastructure and supportive measures to reduce flood risk and the impacts of biodiversity, as well as the noise mitigation needs also to be actioned. Heathrow must commit to implement the recommendations from the committee on climate change, and I'm pleased, as Jonathan said earlier, that they've announced that report today, and we would want to see that being implemented by the airport. If Heathrow introduces the proposed vehicle access charge without meaningful and attractive additional public transport being available for residents of Surrey, then the charge will effectively be a transport tax on our residents. It will be disproportionate impact on our Surrey residents, apart from those that are close to the airport, who have little other option but to drive or take a taxi to Heathrow, unlike many London residents who have fast and reliable public transport alternatives into Heathrow. We disagree with the use of independent parallel planning, which we believe will affect many of our residents in Surrey. The consultation is not, is not about aircraft flight paths, and this will be part of the consultation on airspace in twenty twenty-one. In finishing, I think this is an excellent consultation report to Heathrow, but the important thing now, as already been said by the leader, is that Heathrow must take notice of this. If not, the impact on our residents will be quite serious. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Now...
As a resident that lives just to the south of Heathrow, I attend a number of these presentations by the Heathrow Publicity Department, and on questioning them on road access, you mentioned highways generally, but road access from the south specifically, they were told, I was told categorically, there was no plans to increase any road access from the south of the airport. At one stage, one person said to me, as I mentioned, that we could use the cargo tunnel to go through, there was some thought of it, then somebody contradicted that by saying it's too narrow and they can't dig underneath it. So when you talk about highways, specifically, everybody tends to think about the M25 and that type of thing. It's the local roads in Surrey that give you access, and that's not specifically mentioned. I wonder in your next meetings if you can bring that to their attention.
Absolutely right, and we've already done so at the last HSPG meeting, because for us to actually know what the effect is, we need the modelling. In the moment, we still have not got the modelling for the traffic trips. At the moment, there is no assurances what's going to happen to the roads. We are predicting it, but we need the modelling to know exactly what should be done by Heathrow, and to me, that's a key part of what Heathrow must do as part of the process.
Matt?
Thank you, Chairman. As Mel's asked a roads question, I'll move on to rail then instead. In your opening statement, you mentioned that there would be no improvements to rail links from Surrey into Heathrow. Could you just confirm that and expand, please?
Currently, it is not part of the consent order that we get southern rail access, and the government have already published and have gone out to talk to different people to put schemes together, but no scheme's been agreed, and there does not seem to be enough drive to make this happen. The leader wrote to the Transport Secretary of State only three or four weeks ago. We received an answer, and I have to be honest enough to say that it still does not commit for southern rail. To me, that's the red line. I remember, like many other people, what happened in Terminal Five, when we were promised rail, yes, the station's there, but we've got no rail links in. So I think it's serious, and we've also written to Paul Maynard, the aviation minister, to seek a meeting with him. To me, we really do need to get the government to realise, this is really important to our residents, because without rail links, we really will not, our residents are going to have to, as I said earlier, are going to have to use road, and that's not what we want at all.
Sinead?
Mike, my question's about Spelthorn, which is right on the doorstep of Heathrow, and the whole borough, as I know you're aware, is an air quality management area. Expansion of the airport could have a really detrimental impact on the air quality within the area and on residents' health. What is the airport proposing to do about this?
There are some measures in there, like reducing traffic by workforce in, to the airport, but it's not enough, and we've made this very clear. And what I would say in answer to it is that the climate change report today, again, I haven't read it, should give us indications on what Heathrow will need to do, because we need to protect our residents' health and wellbeing, absolutely crucial. We know that they're going to put the order in anyway for the planning, but what we're saying in Surrey, we want them to put the right mitigation to stop the problems that it will cause with air pollution and general health, and that's something we must stay very close to in the weeks ahead.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I think, sorry, Denise?
If I may, Leader, thank you. Just to pick up on the traffic modelling issue, I raised that particular issue myself at the recent seminar that you coordinated, and that was a very informative session. I'm just wondering, at what point do we actually demand this information? Because this is absolutely crucial to enable residents of Spelthorn and Surrey, because actually, the whole of Surrey will be affected by this, to have some degree of understanding of the impact that all of these infrastructure projects collectively will have. You talk about the planning application being submitted, I would have thought that would have been a key component to that application, but can we not demand that information? Because they just seem to be delivering a bit. Thank you.
Colin and myself met John Holland-Kay and directors of Heathrow about two or three months ago, and we made that same issue. At, when we had Heathrow at the HUPG group three weeks ago, we made the same comment. We need that information, because what we don't know is, how can they put the consent order in without us having been commented on what they're planning to do? To me, it's a really key issue. We are chasing up, but we are very much in the hands of Heathrow to supply us that information, but we will not stop from putting pressure on them to give us that information so we can actually model it properly.
Okay, well, I think that's going to continue for some time. Can I, thank you, Mike, and can I repeat my thanks to John O'Reilly and the Select Committee for their input, and we will watch very closely in terms of how Heathrow now respond to the consultation. There is one recommendation. Is that agreed? Agreed. Thank you very much. Item fourteen is actually reported, Dr. Grant Zaff, but she's not here, I think Mel, Few, you're going to introduce her.
Which requires the preparation of an annual procurement forward plan. Under this new process, the Cabinet will gain sight of the programme of procurements within their respective areas before the Cabinet papers arrive on their desk for approval. Paragraph four of this report details the delegation... Paragraph four of this report details the delegations to enable the procurement contracts that are due to be undertaken during the first tranche of this, which is quarter three and quarter four of the current financial year, and by the end of this current financial year, we'll be able to see, or by the end of this calendar year, we should be able to see the outline contract procurement requirements for the next financial year. So the details of the procurement are contained, all the details of the contracts under consideration are contained in a Part Two item, which we will discuss later. There are four recommendations for this paper on page 297, and I ask the cabinet to agree to them.
Everybody happy with that? Is that agreed? Thank you very much. Item 15 then is moving closer to residents. At the end of last year, I announced that we would be vacating County Hall by the end of 2020, and I'm pleased to say that things are moving along well in relation to the planning of that. It's part of a major piece of work around addressing the culture within the organisation and agile working and digital technology, as well as relocating members of staff to buildings nearer to their place of work, or encouraging them to work more agilely. This paper just simply provides a brief update. It is fair to say that, as I speak today, we haven't yet completed the identifying a building where the civic heart will move to. We have looked at a number of them, but at the end of the day, we need to make sure that wherever we move to, it's the right building and the right decision. I'm hopeful that over the next short period, we will have completed those, that review, and we will have located a building. However, there is now a great deal of planning in terms of the workforce strategy and how people will move from this building, and there are also ongoing discussions around the future of this, of County Hall, with local interested parties and with the Royal Borough Kingston, who clearly have a significant interest in what happens to it. A key part of this is to encourage agile working. This is a move, or a change of approach in that this isn't about monitoring and managing people necessarily that are sitting in the same office, it's not about presenteeism, it's about outcomes and how people can do their jobs more effectively, and that's what we will be looking to do wherever possible, which will enable people to work more flexibly, both in terms of hours and location. We will be setting up some exemplar hubs, as it says in the recommendations, in Quadrant Court, Consort House and Fairmont, and that work is moving forward. So I think the, we are well underway. There is work to be done undoubtedly with staff here in terms of providing support and training as part of that move to agile working, and there will be some road shows where we will further explain and address any concerns that any of the staff have. But what we're doing is entirely consistent with our 2030 vision and the people and organisation strategy. So I'm hoping that when we meet before the end of this year, we will have completed the last little bit in terms of identifying a building, and then we will start to move forward proactively in the early part of next year. Are there any questions? Comments? No? In that case, there are, I think, six recommendations which I have, I think, outlined. Are those agreed? Agreed. Thank you very much. And that takes us to the last item of the public agenda, which is the revision of statements of community involvement, which in itself probably isn't very explanatory. So, Mike, you might just tell us what this is about.
It is very much a technical paper, and what this does this time is to just make some changes to relate some changes in procedures. One is highlighting the need to change due to the General Data Protection Regulations up to date with 2018. Also, there's a section on the neighbourhood planning to provide where Surrey support neighbourhood planning at Surrey County Council. And there's some protocols in terms of consortium with residents, and finally, some changes for streamlining the development management process. It is a straightforward paper, Chairman, but happy to take any questions if anybody wants any queries on this.
No? Okay. Cut off lightly there, Mike. So the recommendation is to adopt the revised statements of community involvement. Is that agreed? Agreed. So that brings us to the end of the meeting. Can I thank those members of the public that attended, both for their attendance and indeed for those speakers that contributed to the debate, and we will see you, I'm sure, at the next council meeting. Under section 100A of Local Government Act 1972, I would invite members of the public pleased to now leave the meeting. Thank you very much.